Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the planet of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 16th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today is Psalms 34 verses 12 through 15. Does anyone want to live a happy life that is long and prosperous? Then keep your tongue from speaking evil and your lips from telling lies. Turn away from evil and do good, search for peace and work to maintain it. The eyes of the Lord watch over those who do write; his ears are open to their cries for help. And our dog warden has our dog from the kennel this morning.
We have a female in kennel number seven. She's available now. We picked her up in Lorraine. It's like a lab pit mix. Very good temperament. Had a little flea problem, but we took care of that and she's ready now. We have thirty dogs in the kennel. Come see us, thank you.
Thank you. Sweetie. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advances and Rehabils None, Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travels?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advances and Rehabils None, Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advances and Rehabils None, Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advances and Rehabils None, Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travels?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Morning, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few potential hires at Job and Family Services, county engineer specifically, sanitary engineers department, 911. I'd like to discuss with the Board. Also, ongoing labor negotiations, United Auto Workers America, United Steelworkers and 911, operating engineers and the bridge employees, potential sale of real estate and one pending legal matter. All topics will have under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So that's good, the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cortez, the monitors are not on out there? I don't know if there's a switch you need to flip?
I thought I did, but let's take a look. Is that?
No.
Yep, it's on. Thank you. Okay.
Somebody tilted that one over there, I just can't see it.
Okay, we're good now. Thank you.
Approving we have the reading in the minutes of August 8.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Accept and generalize the petition from Illyria Township and Residence for the cleaning and clearing of the Freeland Ditch Outfall -- no, Freeland Drive Outfall Ditch. View will be Monday, September 11th at 9:30 and first hearing will be Tuesday, October 3rd at 9:30. Notices will be sent August 21st and published August 28th and September 9th.
So moved.
Second.
That's okay.
I'm really having a hard time with numbers this morning, huh?
That's okay.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Community Development Award Contract to KMU Trucking and Excavating LLC Avon in the amount of $13,750 for Andrew and Pamela Frame at 36353 Hedge Grove Park Drive, North Ridgeville for grant assistance for home repair of septic system, which includes contingency for any unforeseen change orders. Eleven invites, one bid received and will be paid from chip program year 16.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Award Contract to Solid Ground Construction Vermilion in the amount of $10,450 for Ryan Tracy at 451 Baker Street, Wellington, for grant assistance for home repair of a roof replacement, which includes contingency for any unforeseen change orders. Twenty-three invites, two bids received and will be paid from chip program year 16.
It's Barker Street, just for clarification. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under 911, approved change order number two in the amount of $41,121.95 to Don Molds Plantation, North Ridgeville, for additional work due to unforeseen condition at the Burns Rowan Annex for 911 to include additional asphalt paving in the west lot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, that's a hefty change order. Do you want to explain for Don Molds under 911?
Sure.
Thanks.
We surface scratched the parking lot and it was not in good condition. So after we scratched the surface off, found there was no bottom. They laid the lot of the parking lot on top of dirt rather than putting in a sub base. It's unfortunate, but it's one of those unseen conditions that you occasionally run into. It was very poor construction from the beginning. When you purchase a building, you don't necessarily go out there and dig up the parking lot to see what's underneath it. The, quite frankly, was shameful construction when they installed it, but there's nothing we can do now. Well, there is something we can do. We have a couple of choices. We can put blacktop right back over the dirt and be back in the condition in a few years to come, or we can do it correctly. Clearly, the option that I chose was to make correct repairs. Mindful this is a repair, I would probably have preferred to dig out the whole sub base and replace the whole sub base and then relay topping on that, but it's cost prohibitive. I believe we'll get enough life out of making this repair to recover our investment into the future enough and then at that time we can make decisions. And I'm talking, you know, fifteen years down the road. But once we took out the two inches of the topping to grate down and resurface, there was just nothing left.
Luckily, the building was in good -- built well and worked well for us, so unfortunately...
Well, we got a fine purchase on a building. It was a steel for what we got and our investment's been minimal to date, but there was a few unforeseen conditions. You always run into these things. We run into them at the courthouse. They're unobserved. There's no way when you go out there and you spec a job that you can know these things are going to happen. So far, we've had very limited amount of that occur, so I'm comfortable with where we're at right now.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, under Resolution 16796, adopted December 14, 2006, authorizing various personnel to utilize the credit cards for the year 2017. Amendment reflects some additions and deletions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transit, submit federal grant application with FTA and other federal agencies for fiscal year 18 transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorize various filing of applications with ODOT for fiscal year 18 transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Adult Probation, approved grant agreement in the amount of $28,750 with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions, Probation Improvement and Incentive Grant, no cash match is required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, apply for grant monies from fiscal year 17 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $24,157 as a disparate allocation for county and city of Lorraine, each receiving $12,078.50 to purchase miscellaneous equipment and no local match is required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Treasurer, award depository of public funds contract as reviewed and recommended by the County Treasurer for active deposits for a period of August 23, 2017 through August 22, 2020. Huntington Bank, 225 million. U.S. Bank, 225 million. First Federal Liquid, 40 million. Northwest Bank, 50 million. And First National Bank, 225 million.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just to inform the Board, and I know Madam President already knows that, but this -- excuse me. We did get our MOU out for the TCAP yesterday, at least indicating that we're working on our final MOU. I told the partners I didn't care whose letterhead it went out on, so we sent it out on the court's letterhead. I think it was one of those, let's just get it done. I'm not going to argue whose cover it goes out under. So Ms. Kokoski signed that yesterday on behalf of the Board that were actively engaged in our negotiations for an outcome. I thought it was a very productive meeting with the courts and the Sheriff's Department yesterday, a lot of clarification. As I've indicated to you before, I don't see the problems in our community that the other nine -- well, I won't say nine, some of them I think are fairly close, but there's a good half dozen of the largest ten counties that are experiencing significant problems with aligning themselves collaboratively with what they need to do under their MOU. Some of them may not even get it done this year and it's still the voluntary year going in. I believe it's imperative that we take the voluntary year and we get our lessons learned so that when we go into our mandatory year going forward, and there's going to be more years, I believe, after that, that we've learned enough about what we need to be doing to do it very, very successfully.
Didn't I say a deadline, an extension of a deadline or something in one of the emails?
They confused the issue, Commissioner. It's the same extension into September that we've known about all along.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's too many people trying to help people along the way and they're just confusing the matter. So nothing's changed. My understanding is that even though Lake County is number 11, that they're going to take a pass on their money too. So there's going to be some additional funds out there. We're going to be taking a look at seeing what they're going to do with some of those additional TCAP funds.
Dan Troy was kidding about your day at NOAC. You're in the top ten, we're number 11.
Well, my understanding is that they're also a bonus county, just like us, and they've just opt now to take a pass. So I'm just wondering where some of the funds will be directed at. So it'll be an interesting turn of events, but yes, it was very productive. We'll probably meet late next week or the week after. We have a draft outline already of some things we want to accomplish. There was a clear understanding. I give the GL folks a lot of credit. They thought they may be able to capture some funds to reduce cost, which would reduce cost to the Board of Commissioners, but clearly, that's not the case. They tried hard. They got a greater understanding now that that's not really what these funds are about. So I'll be having more dialogue with you going into the future as we get a clearer line of sight to programming that that can be used under this. We're talking about $1.3 million over two years and some change there. Some of the money needs to be used though to offset some loss of funds for adult probation that's happening while this change is taking place. They gave us in this hand, they take it away in this hand. So they did reduce some of the grant money to the probation department while they put money in this hand. So there is some offsets that we need to deal with going forward, but I'll be talking to you more about that. Just wanted to let you know we're moving. We have about another month now, about six weeks, to finish the final MOU. Otherwise, we're in the penalty and we start losing funds going forward.
That's good, we have a good working relationship with our departments and they just come together.
Well, we also benefit from the fact that the judges have been a little bit more progressive in Lorraine County. We're trying to not sentence people to F5 nonviolent offenders to incarceration the first or second time around so that they maybe can get their life straightened out before they go to school and had to be real offenders. And so we're a little bit more progressive. That's how we ended up being in a bonus situation to begin with because we weren't sending a lot of those people down to the state penitentiary to begin with. So it makes the program a little easier in Lorraine County and the relationship a little bit easier to -- the cooperative agreement to work at.
We talked about having a lack of sober living beds and rehab. Now, that building on Broadway that caught fire and is getting torn down actually was a sober living facility, so already lacking now, lacking even more so.
We lack detox facilities. We lack --
What do you have, Jerry?
Excuse me, I was thinking of the -- I lost my train of thought.
CBCF?
No, where we take people for their -- we bus them into Cleveland, I'm sorry.
Oh, for Methadone Clinic?
Excuse me, thank you. I just, it was in my head and I lost it, I apologize. We lack that here. We lack a lot of services here that are very, very important. And one of the things significantly we lack, and people don't want to talk about it, so we're not going to go on very long about it. But no matter how much they monitor and they try to assist these folks, they lack ample and adequate transportation to try to employ themselves. You're not going to keep people out of trouble if they cannot feed themselves and they cannot get to jobs. And that's really one of the prime barriers that's being faced by some of the people that are minor offenders, that have found themselves making poor choices. How do you stop making those poor choices and get into productivity in society when you can't get to a job? When you can't, never mind finding a job, you can't consistently get to that job. And I'm telling you, it's a troubling situation in our community and it's getting worse every day. I don't want to go on and on about this. We've spoken enough about it, but you know, when you start working on these type of things, you start addressing it over and over and over and over again and it appears every place we go. But we'll be bringing a lot of that stuff back to you. It's not a lot of money, it's not going to solve a lot of problems, but we have no choice because beginning next July 1st, we're mandatory not to send any F5s. This is the voluntary year, we want to do it to prepare for that and I think we need to take advantage of it because there's a good amount of funding for us to be able to get our programming in place.
Is that it, Mr. Cortez?
Is that the end of your report, Mr. Cortez?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I do have one matter of pending litigation to discuss, and if I may, I'd like to make a little pitch for Carlisle Township. Last night, I met with a group of very fine veterans. They're starting a project to erect a memorial to veterans in Carlisle Township and seeking donations, so just wanted to comment that and get the word out. And I also wanted to mention, a couple of weeks ago, we gave Mr. Phillips the award for the best hat of the year. There was one of the veterans last night who had a T-shirt that I want to nominate, had a map of the United States and it said, "Two Times World Champs."
Oh, that's good.
I haven't seen that before.
Commissioners' Report.
Oh, it's been a pretty busy week. Thursday, I chaired the Keep Lorraine County Beautiful meeting, which we held at Metro Parks Carlisle Visitor Center. We didn't have a quorum, so we weren't able to get a lot of business done, but we had good discussion on a whole lot of -- good things happened in Lorraine County. I had a meeting that afternoon at the Amy Levin Center, so on the way there, I stopped over at the dog kennel. And I want everybody to mark their calendars for Saturday, August 26th, from 11 to 4, is National Dog Appreciation Day, and they are having a function. Dogs with dogs have hot dogs and come out and see our dogs that we have available at Lorraine County Dog Kennel, which is at 301 Haddaway Street. So got to see the dog that you presented last week. He was still there, yeah. Hopefully somebody came and got him since then, but... So yeah, that afternoon, I attended my stepping up monthly meeting, which addresses keeping those people with severe mental illness out of jails and working on ways to keep them out of jail so they don't end up staying in there longer than other people do. And then I want to congratulate Jessica Schmitz on finding her Mr. Wright, Brian Wright, and they had a wedding on Saturday at Wesleyan Villas Chapel. Jessica's grandmother is a resident there, so she was able to attend her granddaughter's wedding, so it was really nice. And then my condolences to the Zaki family. He's one of our supervisors at the bridge and his father passed away this past week, so went to the funeral home there on Tuesday. Yesterday, we had our stormwater meeting and we passed our 2018 budget for that, pretty similar to this year's budget. So besides that, I think that's the end of my report.
Yeah, busy week, a lot of things going on, but NOAC, we had our governing meeting the other day. Commissioner Lundey and I attended. The Transportation for Livable Communities Grants will be out October 6th for all of our communities. Lorraine County was fortunate last year to receive two of those, $100,000 for transportation and $80,000 for the lakefront connectivity plan that Commissioner Lundey spearheaded. There is a meeting for all our political subdivisions on August 31st to learn about the grants. It's split up, there's half a million dollars in planning and then as much or more in implementation once you've gone through your grant program. So I'm hoping the communities within Lorraine County with special projects will put those together in regards to transportation. We also had a long discussion on the rural transportation planning organizations around the state. There's half a dozen, which the state has now opened up to all the other MPOs, and our Rural Board within the NOAC is discussing benefits or advantages for our rural areas to discuss their own transportation needs directly. We'll see where that goes, we had a lot of discussion on that. Also, Governor Kasich approved a flag lowering in honor of life and service of Chief Fire Controlemen Gary Rem Jr. All flags of USA, State of Ohio, Lorraine County are being flown at half-staff upon all public building and grounds today from sunrise to sunset. So in honor of Controlemen Rem. End of my report.
I'd just like to start too by sending out our prayers to the family of Gary Rem, the Navy Chief Petty Officer, who as Commissioner Calo pointed out, the flags are lowered today in honor of his life and service. It was great meeting some of his family members the other week when we had a local ceremony at the VFW, and he also had some friends come in from out of state and just a very sad loss for their family and for the county and for the country. Also, our prayers go out to the family of Heather Hyer and the two state troopers, Jay Collin and Berkey Bates. They died during the hate rallies that were held in Charlottesville over the weekend. I hope that eventually the President will condemn these hate groups. I just want to make clear, I'm confused by the messaging coming from the President. There's no moral equivalency. You know, one group was obviously there to oppose hate, another group was there to clearly promote hate. Those, you know, carrying the Nazi flag and the Confederate flag weren't exactly members of the local historical society. They're not good people, and we need to stand up and stand together against hate in this country. As far as Commissioner business this week at the NOAC meeting, as Commissioner Calo pointed out, we're exploring an option of having a regional transportation planning organization primarily would focus on rural areas. I think the rural areas and a lot of these metropolitan planning organizations, it felt like they're either not part of the process or not important for the process. This would obviously make the rural areas, put the rural areas in a position of being able to have their own group, make decisions on transportation questions, probably on, you know, paying their NOAC dues and the benefits and all those other things could be processed through the RTPO. So that is being explored. Like, say, happy 80th birthday to my mother-in-law. We had a surprise party for her. We held it at the Cambria in Avon on Saturday. She was surprised, so the whole family managed to keep a secret. But family members, the part I found most interesting, all the family members who came in from out of state, whether they came in from Georgia, whether they came in from Massachusetts, Mississippi, they all wanted to see the lake. So we were directing people up to the lake, having people follow us up to the lake, had large crowds up there at the lake. I got to tell you, the folks are just, you know, blown away by being near water and really enjoying the lakefront. And the comment I heard over and over again is you need to put some restaurants on the lakefront. These are out-of-towners. They know what we've known for a long time, right? So, but we're working on those things. I did miss the Corn Fest over the weekend, it's the first time I missed the Corn Fest in a long time, and did participate in the event held by the fair-minded citizens of Lorraine County. You know, obviously continue to be disappointed that the flag will be back at the fair. I think as I told the Chronicle yesterday, you know, the Fair Board people are not bad people. They run a very good fair, one of the best in the state. You know, I do think their decision on this is misguided. I think Chief Sal Rivera had an interesting proposal. He said, "Why don't we just remove the flag for a year, have some conversation, see how things go and decide how to handle this in the future." And I guess also want to make clear that the fair-minded citizens group of Lorraine County, they've all made very clear in their messaging and in conversations I've had with them that they have no intention of ever going away. The flag, I think, as we found out over the weekend, clearly is a symbol that's embraced by hate groups. by hate groups, it's a divisive symbol, and it really has no place in our society. That completes my report.
Board of Correspondents.
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board? I see a hand raised. Mr. Phillips, I've been waiting for you today.
No hat, Jerry?
I've got my hat.
Okay, all right.
Before you say anything while in your way up here, I just want to say Secretary of State John Houston has something in common with me, we both changed our mind to do the right thing. What do you think about that?
Well, it's people who acknowledge that they made mistakes, I think is an admirable quality.
Thank you, so I'm admirable then.
I always, I always, you can ask my wife, and she can tell you how many times I said I should have listened to her and not did what I did.
Let's just keep peace in the house, Jerry, come on.
Nah, I, I think I try to pry myself on trying to be open-minded, at least listen to opposite views. That's a quality I think is admirable in a person to be open-minded, you know, can always agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
So, thank Gerald W. Phillips, 461 Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. Thank you for the award for the best hat. I think this meeting will be a little quieter than the last. District 7 update, August 11th, the Secretary of State did not, granted the protests, and the charter petition won't be on the ballot. His reason was that it was an illegal combination of attempted charter commission and a charter petition. He ignored the map and the appendix issue. He also ignored the all-powers argument based on the Walker case and the Conover case, which he actually wrote and sustained his decisions. The next step would be if the petitioners want to get on the ballot, they'll file a writ of mandamus in the Supreme Court, and if they do, I'll intervene to make sure that the election law is upheld, because I believe in the integrity of the election law. Last week, you appropriated $25,000 for the protests. I'm assuming if nothing happens, then whatever's left of that won't be spent, and there'll be no need for the money since the protests will have ended. Sales tax, we have 11,844 signatures, the board's in the process of verifying those. I understand there's going to be a meeting, a board meeting on the 18th on Friday, where they will deal with that issue plus all the other candidates' issues. Kind of interesting what that board vote may be, you know, will it be a tie vote and it'll have to go down to the Secretary of State? That's assuming that the two Republican members vote their true convictions that they indicated on July 11th and the reasons, you know, which they stated was access to the ballot, because in this particular case, that is a paramount issue. If for some reason they don't, and it's a 4-0 vote, in my opinion, it clearly indicates that their decision on July 10th was political. I'm not optimistic it's going to be a tie. I'd probably get along worse with the Republican board members than I do with the Democratic board members. So the next step would be getting rid of mandamus to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court will determine the legal issue of the interpretation of that statute. You know, two of the Democratic members on that board are attorneys, I would hope that they would not do politics as usual and read the law, but I don't think that's going to happen. And what's going to happen is the voters are going to get more angry because it's not going to be on the ballot. Last week, there was some discussions about some financial issues, and since this meeting is televised, I hope to make some comments, so hopefully the people who do will get some information and get educated. The sales tax collections for July 2017 is 2.5 million compared to 1.6 million in 2016, and that's the result of the first installment of the quarter percent sales tax increase. The history of the sales tax increase is that in 1986, the rate was increased a half a percent, and that was on all retail sales, and that went to general fund.
Excuse me, Jerry, clarification, it wasn't increased, it was the first half a percent for county use?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, it wasn't increased, it was a half percent for county use, the first piggyback.
Well, increased because it was zero before.
Okay, well.
And then in 94, it was increased an additional quarter percent for the jail, which was a specific use fund. And then in December 16, the quarter percent increase went to the general fund. There were some comments about reports being on the internet and accessible. I think part of the confusion is the reports are on the auditor site, not the commissioner's site. If people go to the commissioner's site, since it's a budgetary thing, they don't see it, so you have to go to the auditor's site. The 2016 CAFRA is not available, which I asked for it because I was kind of curious why it wasn't on the website. I guess there's some problems in that report, and it may not be available to, in two or three months. I would hope that maybe the auditor's office would put on the website at least the unaudited version of it, so that the public can have the financial information. I reviewed the 2015 CAFRA report, and it looks like for the last five, six years, your budget's approximately around 200 million, plus or minus a little. And there was a comment that the budget was decreased 30 million. That's true, but that goes back to about 2016, I mean 2006, when the budget was 230 to 240. It looks like the decrease came in the health expenditures of about 25 million and the human services of 20 million. Not sure why it decreased, it could have been a change in the scope of services or something of that nature. The revenue analysis shows that the main sources of income for the county are property taxes, sales tax, and intergovernmental revenue, which I assume is the local government fund from the state. So, the commissioners have those mechanisms if they've had to increase revenue. Obviously, they have no control over what comes from Columbus, the intergovernmental fund. They do have control over the sales tax and the property by raising the taxes. But there are charges for services, which is an avenue to increase revenue, licenses, permits, and fees. Most governmental agencies have been increasing those over the years, so those are the options that the commissioners have. It became pretty obvious to me that the one source of the solution to deal with the budgetary process is economic development, because economic development will increase commercial activity, which will increase the sales tax without having to burden the, you know, without a vote. Property taxes, if businesses come in, the property taxes for the commercial will come in. I attended the lakefront thing in Avon Lake, I was encouraged that it's being done because, you know, most people know waterfront, water sells, and all you have to do is go to the Lake Erie Islands and see all that economic development that has occurred there. And Lorraine County needs to do that, particularly the city of Lorraine, so I hope something good comes from that. When the budget issue came up last December, you know, I'm not aware of any budgetary attempts to, to have departments lower their expenses. But as I look at the budget, a one and a half percent decrease in expenditures could have balanced the budget. A proposed sales tax increase with the vote of the people, if I was a commissioner...
Jerry, I really have to interrupt you here. Now, you're talking about 240 million, that's everything the county takes in, we're talking about general fund revenues of about 57 or 58 million dollars, okay? You're talking outside of what the jurisdiction is that the Board of Commissioners handle in regard to general funds, so if you can just clarify that a little bit as you're talking. You've been doing this a long time, you know we're not 240 million dollar general fund.
No, I didn't say, but that's the control of the money. You have control over all of the money in the county. You do.
A lot of this dedicated revenues, development of the civilians, mental health.
You have control of the money. You know, I would appreciate, I would appreciate you let me finish mine.
I was just clarifying what you're saying.
Because I don't interrupt, I don't interrupt you guys when you do your reports, so I would appreciate courtesy.
I will give you courtesy if you're clarifying the proper numbers.
Well, the 25 percent sales tax increase that I would propose, would, which I believe the voters would, would potentially pass, would concentrate on law enforcement and safety.
Just so you know, the last time we tried to pass the sales tax, and was it '08? When we ran a $100,000 campaign, it was dedicated to our safety forces, and it didn't pass then either, so that, that didn't work, it's never going to work, nobody's ever going to pass a sales tax, ever.
The, I would concentrate on the prosecutor's office, the courts for the drugs.
Yep, prosecutor and sheriff.
Drug court, veterans' court, recovery court, Sheriff's Department.
Yep.
Emphasizing that, police for the township. I would appreciate if you don't interrupt me, okay? Common courtesy.
Mr. Phillips.
And if I'm yelling, that's too bad, because you know what? Somebody got accused for yelling, so don't interrupt me.
Mr. Phillips, you're way over your three-minute.
Exactly.
I would deal with the drug problem. By being more than courteous and generous to you by letting you clock longer.
The mental health problem, the 9/11 and the emergency. Yeah, now you're selectively enforcing the law, Jerry.
I'm not selectively enforcing.
Because every meeting, everybody goes over the three limits.
And I've always allowed it.
So if you want to get a clock and enforce it right. You know what, you don't like the message, that's why you spoke up, Jerry. And you know what, you're infringing on my First Amendment rights of freedom of speech.
Right, Mr. Phillips.
You are.
I'm tired of you getting up here.
No, I'm tired of you, Jerry, and it's goodbye.
Good, goodbye. We're tired of you getting up here making misinformation, you know as well as we do that 240 million is just an absurd figure, and you just don't, you just don't, you just don't like being rebutted, Mr. Phillips.
You know, you're not a CPA, Mr. Anderson, I am. I stand behind my, my conduct.
Good, why don't you come to the Budget Commission and find out what you're talking about?
No, it's a second time.
You also, you also were...
You're ruining my character.
Well, yeah, you also were incorrect about the sales tax number, because if you were at the Budget Commission, you would have found out those numbers were related to much more than just the increase.
Thank you.
How you doing? Cliff Rivenbark, 829 Marion Street in Sheffield Lake. It's a hard act to follow, because the information that Jerry would talk about is, he is a CPA, so I have to dumb it down really to get down to my level, and it's great to have economic growth and jobs, and that does help, but what I'm trying to find in Government 101 is, like you're saying, information, education, and awareness. And from that, I will take it to the next step. It's a terrible thing right now to stand in our shoes with what's going on in the country, what's going on in the world. Things can unhinge pretty darn quick. We've already gone through what you're saying in 2008 budget, we had a collapse in 2007. A lot of people lost their 401K values, most governments had to take a bite of 30 percent across the board, not just here, in reductions. I'm glad that things have gone way up, I didn't get to enjoy it because I had to take my 401K and live on it. Although I do believe that 22,000 Dow is, you're ready for it again. So what are we doing to prepare for that in this uncertain time? I really can't understand, especially next month, what almost 20 trillion dollars is, and if you're talking on the backs of people, my grandchildren, my grandchildren's grandchildren can never understand and pay back 20 trillion dollars. The state doesn't give you that much money, and we feel the same way because it doesn't trickle down to us. So there's a lot of stuff going on, but that 20 trillion dollars is on the back of my grandchildren. So when the state is obligated to pass a balanced budget and maybe move some shells around, that's their job, you know, so we all kind of got to live with it. We may not like it, it's kind of like a marriage, you may not agree with your spouse on how you're going to spend things, but in the end, you can only deal with what you have. There is a lot of frustration, and there's a lot of people out there that demand change. We have some ability here with people that have a lot of experience, that are used to playing in the swamp, and have fingers that can reach out, and if we're looking at judicial and everything, we can reach out to Manning and say, you know, we got to beg a little bit, and we need some money, do us a favor here. And that's how pretty much all government works. If we really need that kind of stuff, my main question's to start with, basic 101. Whichever department it goes to, without going back to somebody else, what was Snodgrass's basic budget projection the last three years? And, secondary, was there an adjustment made in the middle of the year? And then what budgets did we present? So, you know, Jerry can talk 200 and some million dollars, I'm talking basic 101. Three questions. What did the man tell you you could spend? What did he tell you adjustments were needed up or down? And what did you actually put? And what efforts did you do to step back from that? Last March, I was in this room, and that wasn't a budget problem, according to one person on the board, because I was in this room, and it wasn't dire, it wasn't stressful, it wasn't really bad. So that was my question. After that, we were in December, what spending things happened after that, moving forward? Did we cut? Did we stay the same? Did we increase? And what was our capital expense changes? I know what we did at the end of last year when we started moving things, and I don't want to be confused, because in my pockets, I can't say this is operating expenses and this is capital expenses over here, it's all in the same pocket. So whatever you're going to be looking at, I want to still tell you the same story. My 1979 S10 needed to go, and I lived by myself. I can't bother one person to take me, one person to pick me up. It has to run. We need vehicles to operate. I'm not too smart about Uber, aren't really any taxi cabs available, but when you get down to the brass tacks of it, we have a service in the county that is pared down, because that's what we can afford, and to me, although I looked on it, I called on it, I checked on it, that service did not meet my needs at all. And as I hear from all the other people throughout the county, especially the outlying, one little trunk for rapid transit is worthless. For me personally, I needed it. If I was smart enough to get Uber, it would have been more cost-effective. That '79 S10 is similar to that building across the street. 1940, they said that building's done, like my 1979 car. We can make it whatever you want to make it, we can spend as much money as you want to spend on it. Originally, I was, hey, $2 million, if we can get the old thing put back together again, maybe we'll get some Amherst sandstone and build it back up. Then again, it went to five, it went to six, it went to eight million. What can we do with that money? Do we, number one, I have to ask myself every month, do I need it? Can I afford it? And then what happens? That thing is like the rabbits.
Sir, can I stop you for a second? Okay, you're six minutes twice the amount of time, so can you wrap it up?
Okay, I'll try, from this point on, if I have something and I'm way over, I will bring people in, non-registered voters, that I will get in the grassroots to ask the questions for me, I thank you. I would like all the assets of the county to be brought on board, see if there's any redundancies or any cuts, because that's what normal people do. Most people consider everything they have. You don't go out and get a great deal on Burns Road and spend money on something when you tell people you're broke. In the bidding this week for 201 Burns, $300,000 you'd like to spend on Burns. Then again, across the street, you're having another option and another option for this week, $280 million for that dinosaur over there, that would be nice.
Thank you.
And...
Okay, sir, that's, we need to wrap it up, please.
One last one. With the addictions and that, I know about addictions, dealt with them in my family, my friends, you don't want to give them money, they lie, they cheat, you can't trust them, they're not responsible, they're not honest, and even with that small share of 170 pennies that you got for that type of service, and you probably could pass, some people feel that about government.
Sir, sir, I'd like to answer one of your questions, your pocket analogy. See, in government, it's just exactly the opposite of what you said. We get money, and it does have to go into certain pockets, and the point...
Dead dates are great, but I also just say, let's put all of your assets on the table.
Well, we are, let me...
And start to say, what can we cut? If you need a little bit, cut some assets.
Can I, can I ask, can I answer your question? We have to put things into pockets, and the point I'm trying to make is, we pass a levy for children's services that has to go into the children's services levy, and we can't spend it for the share, and that's what I'm trying to say with what Mr. Phillips said. There may be 240 million altogether, but we only have roughly, we only have roughly 50, 50s that we can spend on law enforcement and, and the sheriff and that sort of thing. So that's all I'm trying to explain, because...
Thank you. And a rebuttal to that, when we start for spin tactics on that...
That's not a spin, sir, that's a fact.
Well, that's my, this is me stating it. I heard last week that, I was in Elyria, we did many wonderful projects, brick and brick and mortar. I don't think it affected the new computer, the beautiful parking lot, the new building. I don't think it affected happy morale to get rapists back in jail. I don't think it did anything to do with con artists being kept off the street, and if I had to, when I was a young kid, I played football on SEAL and CHIP, and if we had to get back to that, if all we could do is gravel, I've lived that way before. I don't know Mr. Ray from the ODOT. I do have, I did have contact with Mr. Gates, it's a long process, and if you need us to, uh, some of that government ODOT money, it'll take a little while, but we'll get the price of the tar for you, but in the meantime, we gotta travel down those bad roads, dust all over the place. I'll go to the county fair and get some feathers this week.
Just going to let everybody know when three minutes is up, and then after that, you can try to wrap it up, if that's okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Jeff. Uh, Jeff Baxter, 160 Burns Road, Elyria, Ohio. I really have just two things I want to talk about this morning, and, um, one of them is transportation. You know, that's something that came up a number of times here this morning, and I think maybe, you know, maybe the Commissioners Board had that right on the levy that the voters voted down last November, when you put the levy to, to, to split it, general fund and transportation. You know, um, the transportation thing is a very strong thing that we've got to have here in, in Lorraine County. Um, I believe there's a gentleman a few weeks ago who spoke about that quite passionately, a former transportation director, and would like to see more effort put into that. I would have to say, I think that's something that needs to be addressed as well. Um, so, I would like to understand, from the Board of Commissioners' perspective, you know, what are you doing to try and do that? Can you take some of the money that's going to come from the sales tax that you yourselves thought was the right thing to do in November, but changed your mind in December when you passed it not to include that? And I don't know if that was a procedural, technical thing, or whatever, there's never really been any explanation I've, I've been able to see for that. But that's, that's just a thought from me to you. A second thing that I want to talk about is, I guess I'm, I, I want to know, is there somebody asleep at the wheel? We have north-south corridors in Lorraine County. We have Route 83 in North Ridgeville, right now is under a, uh, construction issue. Uh, they're doing the roundabout at Mills and Route 83. Uh, the, if you, if you work your way west, 301 now has, I believe it's a county project to replace a bridge in, uh, in Sheffield Village, and that is causing a lot of traffic, uh, rerouting and issues in that area. You know, just a little bit further west, we can thank, I believe, the city of Elyria for what I'm calling the Gulf Road fiasco, okay? This is a poorly communicated project, I think, there's been issues with the planning of it, and whatever else, I'm not really sure. But it's not good for the citizens of Elyria and the citizens of Lorraine County, because that is a major artery between Lorraine and southern parts.
Move one street over to the west again, then you got West River.
Well, you're just ahead of me there, yeah. West River?
It's everywhere.
And I think, I'm not sure, but I believe that's a state project.
Yes.
And then, you know, let's go just a little further west to the Route 57, where they're rebuilding that bridge, and we again have construction, and I think it's the third summer in a row at that area, you know? So, I don't know if somebody's asleep at the wheel or what, but it just seemed to me that maybe that's the case. Have a good day.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session, as outlined by the, uh, county prosecutor and our administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.